Karnan Iswana, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you for having me.
I think as a newcomer to Palo Alto Politics and the school board, I think the right place to start is asking you to tell us why you're running and what issues prompted right now to have you come forward and do this in the middle of a pandemic.
So what caused me to want to run in the middle of this pandemic is just the communication and response to the pandemic primarily. I have elementary aged children and how the spring went was not good at all. And the communication over the summer was inconsistent. And I just felt like this is not good enough for me. I also felt like I can't just say, I don't like this or this isn't good enough, but I needed to do something more. And I think being at home, working for the last now six months really made me feel like I needed to do something more with the community. I needed to engage more with others. And the thing that I care about most is kids' education, that and food. And so I feel like it's important to, you know, do something where you have a passion or you have an interest and where you feel like you can make a difference, where you can make things better. And this was the one place where I felt like my background and my expertise could help make for a better school district experience in the future.
Do you, in describing your frustration about the communication during the pandemic, do you feel that mistakes have been made? Or that it's just a difficult and challenging time and it's something that you feel like you can contribute to us getting through?
I think that there are aspects in the beginning that were definitely, we don't know what's going on. And this is a completely new experience. And it's not easy to come up with something out of the blue. But after four or five months, I don't think it's just learning or trying to figure out what to do. I think it's more than that. When I look at how information is communicated and how decisions are communicated and how the process behind decisions is communicated, that's where I see the gap. That's where I see the lack of transparency that I think is leading to a real lack of trust in the school district and in the school district decision making. And that's where I think that I could offer skills or experience that could help advise on what we could do better or what we could do different. I work for a company, a publicly traded company, and we had a COVID task force from early March. And we have a whole bunch of processes and procedures that we've been talking about as we've opened offices around the world. And I think that you can put in place smart processes. You can put in place clear communication around what's going on. And you have to communicate it in a way that people feel like both what they've been saying has been heard and being addressed, but also that people just know what's going on.
So how would it have looked different if you'd been on the school board?
I think it would have looked different in that we needed to have something that was just more organized. I feel like when I get an email with 20 different paragraphs addressing different concerns and issues, it's hard for me to process and understand what's significant and what's important in that. It would be really great if you had a summary at the start that said, here are the things being addressed. And then maybe links to each of those sub areas. And then from each of those areas, you could link to sort of more detail. You needed to have a calendar at the top of every email. I had to check the updated school calendar to know that October 2nd is no longer a school holiday. I was totally going to plan a trip that weekend, but I didn't. I mean, it was never communicated out to us that, it wasn't even really clearly communicated out to us, except for in like the last line of an email that the new start date for elementary was going to be the 17th. Like little things like that that don't even have to do with bigger policy questions, but are just like, so that parents can make plans. That kind of stuff got lost. And I look at what the city's done in the daily coronavirus reports, and it's just really clear what's going on and what they're sharing with us. And I look at what I get from the school district, and it's just a hodgepodge of information. And I do, I did hear, okay, here, here's all this information. We have answers to all the questions somewhere, but it's going to take us a week to organize it in one place for you. Well, why is it six months after this started that we're just thinking about organizing the information? Like, that should have been the first thing that was done is come up with, how are we going to communicate? What's the plan for addressing, getting information out there? It shouldn't be like tag along to the end. Oh, now, now we need to figure out this, this part of it. That's kind of the first part. And so I think I would have asked more questions about and requested there to be a different form of addressing the parent population.
How much of that do you think is rooted in district culture and perhaps leadership, including the board, versus responding on the fly to an unprecedented situation?
I think, I think some of it is the district administration and the board and the way they wanted to control the dialogue. Because what I would hear from the school principals is we're only allowed to send out an email on Wednesdays. That has been directed to us because there was this real sense that the school district really wanted to control when communication came out. Now, there could be good reason for that in that, you know, a principal would send something on Monday, and then another thing would come out on Tuesday, another thing on Wednesday. So there was too much. But the way it was handled was one that looked like the central administration was trying to control all of the dialogue and not look to the school principals to say, this is what my community is asking and this is what my community needs. Can I, can I address them differently? And so I think it was this, this need for central control that could have been the right thing for a certain amount of time. But to the extent you kept getting complaints and issues, I feel like you could have used a few months or like the first month to figure things out. But then you need to, you need to put in place structure and plans to be more crisp and to be more clear and to find out why, why what you're doing isn't sufficient or why people have all these questions that aren't being addressed. And I just don't think there's as much of an interest from the administration in understanding what the community is really interested in. I think that they have really focused on, we need to control, we need to organize. And to a certain extent, in the beginning of a pandemic, they needed to do that. But then after a certain amount of time, they needed to receive more feedback. There needed to be an iterative loop of, okay, this is what's happening. What do you think? And we're going to now shift and change, not, we're going to come up with a great plan, put it in place, and then you just have to accept it. And that was the feeling we got, was one of, as a parent, you just have to accept what we're saying. I don't expect every school board member to respond to every email when they're getting 500 emails a day in the first three weeks of the pandemic. Like, that's not realistic. But I do expect there to be some form of a communication indicating, these are the issues that we see. This is what we're thinking about and how to address them. This is the information that we are gathering. And this is when we're going to come back to address that issue because we will have what we need in order to make a decision. And then once we've made that decision, this is how we're going to communicate it to you. I mean, that's how I communicate in my work. And I would just expect that same level of competence and diligence from my school district.
So given where we're at with the school year, with reopening plans, what do you think is most needed in terms of setting goals for a successful reopening?
I think in order to successfully reopen, we need to focus on what do the students need in order to be successful. I can see it for my second grade son that this online distance learning is not leading to success. I can see him just getting worse as weeks go on and, and really falling back in his ability to read and his ability to write and his ability to do these basic skills. Now, some kids, it's working great. But for a number of them, particularly at the younger years, it is just not effective at all. I think we have a lot of concerns around what does coronavirus mean and what are the risks associated with having this virus in the community? And to that, I would say, let's look at what's been successful. The summer camps this summer were quite successful. PAC, Palo Alto Community Childcare, where I serve on the board, and last year I was board chair. You know, we opened on the school sites, summer programs. We are now having programs on the school sites. There are 24 kids at Addison. Once we get licensing approval, there'll be 36 on Addison that are being served. And what they found is, yes, you might have a teacher or a student that comes back COVID positive, but it's not because of the site itself. It's outside of the site that that spread happened. But what you found is following all the, the Santa Clara County procedures and processes is that there's no spread. And that's the important thing. The important thing is not that there's be no cases whatsoever, but that we put in place the proper process and procedure so that there is no spread. And I think that that can be done. And what I've seen in my own children is, at the beginning of the summer, they had no interest in wearing masks at all. Did not want to wear them, thought they were horrible. By the end of the summer, by doing summer camps, like Junior Museum and Zoo or the Rinconada Swim and Sport, they got to the point where they would forget to take their masks off in the car. My son was in a soccer camp where he wore his mask outside all day, running around in 90 degree heat, playing soccer. Because he just was like, this is just what you do. You wear your mask. And so I think kids can get used to this idea of wearing masks, idea of being distanced from others. And it will just help them immensely to be around those other kids and be around the teachers. And what I've seen from my own children, being at AKC, is that it makes a real big difference to their mental health. The spring was so horrible for their just feelings. And it's, I think everyone was just a little depressed. But being in those summer camps and now being with other kids just makes a huge difference. What my daughter says to me, who's in fifth grade, is, I think I could probably be more productive by myself at home, but I would be so much more unhappy. And at this age, particularly when all of us worry a lot about mental health in the community, I want my kids to have a place where they can be happy, where they can feel like they're doing something or that they're engaged in something. And I think that's what we all want. And part of me feels like, it seems like it's really difficult to reopen, to move to this hybrid model. But I thought that that was the plan this summer. Like, I thought they had put in place a plan for hybrid this summer. So why is it so difficult? Didn't we already have that plan and that whole process put together? And then we had to shift to, to distance learning because of, you know, the, the status of the county. So we should have a process. We should have infrastructure in place. It shouldn't be, oh, oh, what are we going to do? This should have been part of the, the structure all along. One of my concerns is actually, we have, for elementary, we have a distance learning schedule, and now we're going to this new hybrid schedule, and they're totally and completely different. And so was there any thinking that went on that we need to have a, a distance learning schedule that will, will easily shift into a hybrid schedule? And that's where I wonder at the, the thinking that went on and the planning that went on for whatever the COVID task force was for the district to, to put in place something that you could shift. I, you know, talked with a friend in another school district, and she said for her daughter's high school class, and she's a freshman, what they did is they had a sequence of classes that each of the freshmen were put into that were based on which language they picked. And every, every freshman had like a group of 30 where they went through all their classes together. So that if they shifted to in-person, they would already have a stable cohort that they would go through the day with. And I just don't think that that was something we did here. Which means, yeah, you probably do need to wait until the mid-year to, to put in something for all of those classes that exist today. And it concerns me that the, the longer term planning or the transition planning wasn't part of that original plan. And that's what I think is making it really difficult right now.
You haven't mentioned teachers at all. And I wonder how you view the concerns of the teachers about returning to live learning and the interactions between the district and its teachers' union.
Okay. So I sit on the Addison Site Council, and I just can hear at our last Site Council meeting last month, the first grade teacher who's on the Site Council with us say, I just miss seeing those little kids' faces. I just really miss them. And I think there are many teachers who really want to be with the kids. I think that there are many teachers as well that are very concerned about their safety because of a variety of reasons. And I think that if we put in place proper safety protocols, like they've done at the childcare facilities, like they did in the summer camps, we can create a structure that is safe. And that can be, you can point to examples that have worked, where there is no community spread, even if there has been exposure because of the use of masks, because of the use of PPE, and because of the use of spacing. And so somehow, the dialogue between the school district administration and the teachers' union just seems so antagonistic. And like, nobody is listening to one another. And I don't understand why that's the case. Because when I talk with teachers, my kids' teachers in particular, they're pretty engaged in, I want to do the best thing for the kids. I think most teachers are teaching because they want to teach. They, they want to engage with the kids. They want to, to do a good job. I don't think any of them are saying, oh, no, I don't want my, you know, my, the children I'm teaching to learn. And so we need to work together to come up with something that makes people feel comfortable. And, you know, what I've seen in our office environments is we have people back on-site because they need to be there. You know, what I see at PAC is we have people on-site because like you can't run childcare without people on-site. You know, what I see in doctors' offices and in, in supermarkets, and my husband works for Bart, like, he goes into the office twice a week because he has to meet with people. Like, there are jobs that require you interacting with people. And people have been doing that for many, many months now, quite successfully without spread. So why is there a concern that, that we won't be able to do that successfully within the schools? Is it that there's poor communication? Is it that we started on a task force around safety too late? I mean, I would have thought that at the very beginning of the pandemic, this would have been a task force that was put together to look into, how do we work with the teachers to create safe future environments? But I recall at the end of July board meeting, Dawn Austin talked about just then putting together a safety commission. And I just, I was like, I don't understand. Wasn't this in place already? Aren't you just like finalizing details? School's starting in three weeks. And so is it a lack of planning? Is it a lack of communication? Is it a lack of awareness of what has successfully worked? I don't know the answer to that. But I do think that the dialogue seems broken.
So once schools are reopened, we get past this pandemic, obviously, the district will be dealing with a lot of the issues that have been present for many years. Achievement gap is one of them. And I want to know, do you have any specific or concrete proposals for what can the district do to bring some of the lower achieving students up?
So I think that the best thing we can do for our students is to find them where they're at and support them to their best potential. I think that if we say, we are just going to try to address this one group, we're not looking at the big picture that we should be bringing everyone higher or we should be bringing everyone to their, their fullest potential. I think that it helps a lot when you have programs, particularly in elementary, to, at least for kids that are going through the district all 12, 13 years, to address the, the reading, like the reading, the writing and arithmetic, right? When, pre-COVID, one of the proposals by our kinder teachers that I thought was excellent was, for the first six weeks, when they have the half-day, for the second half of the day, when kids would normally go home, to have an after-school just like crash course for those kids that didn't know their numbers, didn't know their letters, and just needed a little pick-me-up to catch them up. So that then when they went to all-day, they would be able to get them a little bit further ahead. And so I think we need to think with our teachers, actually, and sort of what they feel will be effective in getting the kids to that next level so that they are sort of aligned with the rest of the kids. And to me, one of the things you struggle with is, you can only do so much within the classroom. A lot happens at home. Is there homework that's not making it home? Is there no support in the house? Because, you know, as the kids get older, they need to take care of the younger kids. They need to do other things. And so they can't focus on their education. And so how are we supporting that whole family to create a structure where each child has enough time and has enough energy and has enough food, food is important, to, to be able to do that? And what particular program? I don't know. Is it more after-school activity and enrichment? Is it more in-the-classroom pull-outs? I mean, for kids that are behind, like, my son has an IEP for reading. He gets pulled out to work on his reading every day or three days a week. And, you know, you have to do some things within the class. You need to do some things after class. And then you just need to figure out for the children, like, what is, what is the root cause of this? Because often it's things that are outside of the school day. And, and that's, that's what, that's what's hard. And so I do think it's important for us to, you know, address the whole child and the whole child environment because that's going to make a big difference. And it's, it's personalizing a little bit education for the kids to give them the resources they need.
So there are some, some programs that have been initiated or strategies to bring some kids up, like delaning at the start of high school. And I'm wondering if you think that those, those approaches are just not appropriate or not correct, not helpful? Or are you just saying that there's, there's other strategies that need to be adopted?
So, you know, on the concept of delaning, I was talking with one high school kid who talked about his English class that was delayed. And that what ended up happening within the class is some of the kids would do the assignment and then be bored and kind of just play around and do nothing. And other kids would really struggle and feel really bad about themselves. And he felt like those kids got really embarrassed. And so he was bored and frustrated. Other kids were embarrassed because they were like, why are these other kids getting it done and I can't? And so that's an unintended consequence of bringing kids together. And so if you're going to delane, if you're going to have one place for all the kids to be together, you're going to have to differentiate what you're teaching in such a way that each child is being challenged just a little bit beyond what they're comfortable for. Not, some kids are challenged so much that they just frustrated and give up. And other kids aren't really challenged at all, so then they just don't do anything. And that's, to me, the hardest part about delaning is that it means you have to really customize the class to different students. You know, another alternative is to have classes that are for each of the different levels of students. But then you're separating kids and they're not interacting as much. So depending on the subject matter, depending on the material, and depending on what the teacher's sort of engagement is in, in customizing, it can be different. But my biggest concern in talking with students is really this idea that by putting kids of different levels together, you make some kids feel bad about themselves. And one of the things we talk about in PAUSD a lot is mental health and the competitive pressure within the classrooms and not wanting to have kids be so competitive that they, you know, make themselves sick. And, and I worry that by having kids see themselves not doing as well as others, that you're, you're making them feel bad about themselves so they stop trying.
I'm curious of what your assessment is of district leadership? And in particular, in what areas the district has improved or declined under Superintendent Dawn Austin?
So I'll say that I think that, I've clearly indicated, I think communication is a hot mess and it's just not working. And that is an area that, I don't know if it's declined, as, I think it has declined over time and that I think absolutely needs to be improved. I think that we have gone through a lot of principles at Paly and at Green. And I feel like some of what the district needed to do is to reset. It's to clean some systems out, some, clean some schools out of administration, to, to create an administration that works better together. And I do think we actually have an administration now that works better together, that is less siloed and that's more engaged in coming up with plans together. And I think that that's good. And, you know, it's important that our administration be a team and not a whole bunch of individual groups that don't want to work with each other. But I do think that more could be done to communicate why these changes are taking place and what the expected impact of the changes is going to be. And, you know, then a check-in later to say, look, we said we made these changes for this reason. And now, look, we're seeing the result. Because that will help rebuild this trust. My biggest concern is this current administration and leadership really doesn't seem to have the trust of the community. And some of that's pandemic, but some of that's pre-pandemic. Frustration at not being heard, the feeling that there's so much unconscious bias within this area that people feel like their, their beliefs or their values are being undermined or being told they don't matter. I mean, one of the best parts of running for public office is talking with the community, is engaging with people, is hearing what people have to say. And one of the disheartening parts of it for me was hearing how many people felt like their voices didn't matter. Not only did they not matter, that they, they themselves didn't matter. And I think that the small level of bullying that takes place throughout the school district definitely has a racial tinge to it and that it is unfortunate and not enough is being really done to address that. And part of that, I think, is people don't see it because it's not being, it's not happening to them. And they don't understand that when you make fun of somebody for their belief or their thinking, they can feel like you're making fun of their culture. Or they can make, feel like you're making fun of them because of their background. And the background of the people that make up our city has shifted. In the last 40 years, it's gone from what, about 90% white to about 60% white. So there are other cultures and other ways of seeing things within our school district. And we should embrace that. And we should understand that those different viewpoints aren't wrong. They're just different. And so don't tell people they're wrong for believing something different. Understand why they're saying that and understand what that means to long-term, how we need to communicate and talk to people. And then we can't make fun of people for how they talk or how they share things. And that is something that worries me. And I think it leads to this decreasing trust. And I think it's also led to a decrease in engagement in the PTAs, a decrease in engagement in, you know, PTA, in all the different, you know, support organizations that really help our district a lot. So we need more community engagement. And we'll get that if we improve trust and we improve this feeling that you're part of something that wants you to be a part of it.
I assume you're talking about the parents and bullying among parents as opposed to students strictly?
Oh, students too.
Okay. But inclusive of parents?
Inclusive of parents. The parents feel it and the students feel it as well. The parents tell stories about what's happened to their students. You know, I won't play with you because you're so brown. You know, those types of words that may not have, the kids that are really young may not understand what they're saying, but they had to hear something like that from somewhere. And so I think that it's happening at the parents. But if, if kids are seeing their parents in these situations or seeing parents do this, it's just going to flow down to feel like that's okay. You know, it's the same as kids saying, well, you know, girls can't do that. My daughter heard that and forth, girls can't play offense. They're no good at that. And she's like, what do you mean? Like, I scored just as many points as the boys. Like, how could you say I can't do this? But they're hearing it. And when I said this to another parent, they're like, oh, yeah, they've been saying that for years. And I'm like, what is going on? That this is, this is normal. It's, it's, it's seen as just like part of what's going on. And that means that it's okay. You know, I talk with these middle school girls that are just like, yeah, you know, the boys will touch your hair, flip your bra strap. Like, that's normal. That happens all the time. And I'm like, well, I remember that from when I was in junior high. But, you know, is that good? Is that what I want to see? You know, in, you know, I work at a company. I run IP privacy investigations, litigation, employment in our internal and external contracts. So we do a lot of stuff. One of the most interesting things we do is investigations, looking into somebody who says, there's harassment, there's bullying, there's other things. And you interview, you look at what's happening. And then you do training. And then you change processes. And then you say, we need to have reporting on certain things. And I worry that this district And I worry that this district might hear about things but doesn't go all the way to say, and now we need to put in place education and training and outreach into not just the school, but the community. And we need to put in place new processes that will help make sure that this doesn't happen again or that when people see this happening, they have, they know that they have a place to go.